All right, let's call the order of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, December ninth.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, let's have a pledge of allegiance and today's invocation will be led by Reverend Bruce Beatty, Church of the Nazarene in Ottawa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Reverend, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. It's a privilege to be able to offer this invocation this morning as it's about our heads and our hearts. Father, we give you praise for this day and thank you for this beautiful day that you have set before us. We are in our Advent season and during a season that leads up to Christmas and the birth of our Savior. It is a season of hope, a season of peace, a season of joy, and a season of love. Help us to be able to realize those and experience those even through these difficult days with this pandemic. I would ask your blessings upon this commission as they conduct the business of the county. Would ask that you would give them discernment and direction in the decisions that they make. I would ask that you would just give them a sense of your presence, touch them and their families for the work that they are doing through this county. Or I would just ask that you would help all that is going on against this pandemic, the COVID and the vaccine. Things are starting to roll together, but we still have a lot of people that are hurting worldwide in our nation and even in our own county and community. So we would just ask for your provisions and for your protection. As these men and women conduct the business of a county, again, lead, guide, and direct. And we will give you praise for all that is said and done. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being on.
All right. You all have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Correspondence and organizational business, Derek?
No, I don't have anything, Colt. Thanks.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Our consent agenda today would be tax change orders, the amount of $642.14. We have a special payroll for $596.73. And minutes from December 2nd, our meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Dunn?
All right, it looked like Don got in there for a motion. All right.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Now, items of business, the first one is a rezoning application. Good morning, Larry Walrod, Planning and Zoning Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I hope everybody can hear me this morning.
Sure can.
The first matter on your consideration, it's the rezoning application filed by the Shapers. This is to rezone approximately four and a half acres from an A1 to the R3A, single-family residential zoning district. And to rezone the remaining approximately 35 acres to the A1 agricultural, from the A1 agricultural zoning to an A2 transitional zone. As you know, that no longer satisfies the 40-acre minimum lot size. And the smaller tract that's being rezoned this morning, approximately four and a half acres, is being granted to a relative for the construction of a new home site. Planning Commission considered this at their November meeting and have forwarded a recommendation to you to approve this rezoning request and to direct staff to modify our official zoning maps accordingly. We did give notice to six surrounding property owners. We did not receive any comments for or against this rezoning request, and therefore we'd ask that you give consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation. Hello?
There you are. I don't hear any questions. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2010-1794 to rezone approximately 5,400 acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to an A3, R3A, single-family residential three-acre tract zoning district and to rezone approximately 35, 4,600 acres from A1 zoning district to A2 zoning district and amend the county zoning map accordingly?
Is this Commissioner Dickinson I'll make the motion?
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson also second.
Let's go, I am the motion and Rick the second. Is that all right with everybody?
That sounds good.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Now, our second item of business, also rezoning application. It's all yours, Larry.
As you've indicated, this is another consideration for rezoning. This is to rezone 60 acres from the agricultural zoning district to the A2 transitional ag. This would allow for the division of creating two separate parcels. Each of those parcels selling to different parties at this time. We did give notice to seven surrounding property owners for the public hearing with the Planning Commission. There was some concern raised by some of the adjoining properties as to why this was being divided in the manner that it was. However, that division does satisfy all of the county's requirements for our comprehensive plan, zoning regulations, and subdivision regulations. You'll note on the aerial photo that shows the parcels. That the Westerly parcel, which is approximately 26.8 acres, it will be retained by and purchased by the property immediately to the west and retained in agricultural practice, cultivated agriculture. The other parcel, that is kind of a wooded area, and it was being acquired by a different party and obviously not for very much of an agricultural operation, but it will be retained in open space and probably used for hunting purposes. But there was some concern by the neighbors and after they learned how this was being divided and why, we didn't get any opposition. Therefore, the Planning Commission has approved this and submitted a recommendation to you for the approval of the rezoning, to rezone the 60 acres from A1 to A2, and to direct staff to amend our official zoning map accordingly. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2010-1801?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve.
Stottlemyre, second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Third item, also rezoning application. Go ahead, Larry.
This is another rezoning request. It's very similar to the first time that you had this morning on your agenda. This is a request to rezone approximately six acres from an A1 to the RE residential estate. And to rezone the remainder then from the A1 to the A2 transitional zoning district. The purpose for this is to permit this division to grant to a family member to construct a new residence. We're pleased to see the number of applications that we've been receiving for these. It's amazing how many of these have occurred in the last few months. But anyway, the Planning Commission did give consideration to this and they found that it did comply with the requirements of our zoning and subdivision regulations as well as our comprehensive plan. And therefore have forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of the rezoning and to direct staff to amend our official zoning map accordingly. Again, I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
All right, not hearing anyone. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2010-1802?
This is Don, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre? Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. I'll run these by.
Yes.
Do you know, this, Don, do you know approximately how many new residents we've had so far this year? Apply for new residents?
I can assemble that information and have it available for you. I haven't done it for this.
Just email it, okay?
Yes, we can email that to you and it's amazing the number of permits that we are addressing. And hopefully that means that we have seen a real return to the residential growth throughout the rural areas of the county.
Yeah, I know. I've seen three or four just in my area out there just lately. So I'd like to know that number if you get a chance, Larry.
Okay, we can do that. The biggest drawback that we presently see, Don, is the fact that building materials are getting harder to acquire. And in fact, the prices on those have increased enormously since the pandemic went into effect. But hopefully after we get the, everything moving here, we're going to see a lot of these homes that are kind of held up waiting for the prices to come down on the materials to get started. We've got a number of those in-house right now.
Thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
All right. Our fourth item of business is to look at a quote from Hoydale to replace fuel dispensers at the Public Works Fuel Island. David Lee, are you on?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, so earlier this year, we finished installing new fuel tanks and new fuel lines, sumps associated with those lines, all the way up to the fuel dispensers. We were told at the beginning of that process that our fuel pumps would work just fine. However, that turned out to be inaccurate. We've had issues with these pumps, specifically the unleaded pump, losing pressure. Since we've installed these new tanks, each time this happens, we're having to get one of our mechanics out to re-prime the lines. What's happening is our pumps are too far away from the tanks. They're recommended to be within 25 feet of the tanks, and we're over 40 feet away, which causes vapor to get into the line and ultimately we lose pressure on that line and the fuel won't flow through the unleaded pump. We've had Hoydale out numerous times this year to perform pressure tests. They've replaced motors, installed relief valves. They even painted some of the lines to help with the vapor. This is especially, occurs especially during times of hot weather. So this summer, we had some issues. And, you know, as you know, we have county vehicles that fuel at all times of the day and night. And we've had sheriff's officers in the middle of the night trying to pump and the fuel pumps wouldn't operate, which causes a delay in them getting fuel in their vehicles and getting them back out on the road. So we, in working with Hoydale, we ended up contacting the owner of Hoydale to get this situation resolved. And so the solution is to switch our pumps, which are currently a suction-based system, which is when we're so far away from the tanks, they are prone to vapor getting into the lines and causing the issues that we're having. And moving to new dispensers that are a complete pressurized system. So we should not have these issues going forward if we upgrade our fuel pumps. So essentially, if we do this, we will have new equipment from the fuel dispenser through the lines all the way to the new tanks. So we shouldn't have any issues moving forward. Hoydale recognizes their participation in this issue and have agreed to discount the cost of this work by just over 27%. So they're knocking a few dollars off to help us offset the cost for this. And myself and staff are comfortable moving forward with this. And Hoydale has provided us a quote to replace the fuel dispensers at a cost of $18,003.16. That is with, that's the discounted price. And so we would ask you to approve this quote.
All right. Any questions to David on this?
Mr. Dunn, is that going to be both diesel and unleaded?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That includes both dispensers.
All right.
This is Don, I'll make a motion to approve purchase.
All right, is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. I'm staffed for us. Derek?
Thanks, Colt. And the county continues its COVID response, obviously. I think we are on the cusp of seeing the surge that, at least all of us involved in the response have kind of believed we would see a surge after Thanksgiving. And I think we are starting to see that now. And I fully expect to see it happen next week. I will let Nick talk a little more in-depth about that. What I want to talk about is just the five of you and your expectations for 2021. There is a lot of talk of an impending vaccine, and that's obviously great news. And I think that when we get a vaccine and it's widely accessible, I think that a lot of our, so much of what we do and can probably go back to looking a lot closer to quote-unquote "normal." You know, I think we'll be able to meet in person and do a whole lot more employee appreciation type events. And I think certainly we can look forward to that. But what I want to caution you about is, operationally, it is going to impose an incredible burden on local government. My fear is that the pandemic is already old news to a lot of folks. That as we transition into 2021 and we start talking about vaccines, that, you know, the mindset is, well, the pandemic's over, we've got vaccines. But I would urge all five of you to keep in mind just the operational burden that that's going to place on some of your staff members. You know, we're, I look at, we've been doing this for nine-ish months now. And I think our busiest time is easily still in front of us because we're going to have more and more cases. I think we all believe that. So we're going to be doing more and more contact tracing, more telephone calls, more testing. And then you're going to add into that vaccine, vaccine distribution, vaccine administration. I don't think we know yet exactly what the vaccine is going to look like. But I do believe that there will be the initial administration and then probably a booster. And that is something that we are going to make, you know, we're going to have to figure that out. And how do we track that? And how do we get people to come back in to get that booster so that the vaccine is effective? I just want all of this on your radar because this requires an enormous amount of my time. And I think that when, you know, the perception becomes we're past this pandemic, there's going to be a lot of, well, we can do all of these things now, let's take on these projects. Just please keep in mind that while I think some things will go back to normal, I would expect for, you know, potentially all of 2021 that we are still going to be wrapped up in this pandemic. Even if the health and safety issues by the end of the year have declined because of a presence of a vaccine, somebody still has to be here to administer that. And given, you know, the amount of contact it involves with the people that you all serve, it's obviously something that you want us devoting a lot of our time and attention to. And so I would ask that you just keep that in mind. I think financially, a lot can change, but as of right now, I don't see any reason to be concerned financially. I think frankly, with this CARES Act money, we had a large influx. And so I think the financial health of the county is in a great spot. I think when we are truly on the other side of this, and I've said this to you before, we'll probably be able to do some pretty creative things from a budget standpoint or potentially take on some projects that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of when that's going to be because I don't think we're going to see it in 2021 yet. Unless, you know, we add a bunch of staff, which, you know, the five of you know, generally I am not supportive of adding staff, particularly when, you know, you staff to your normal workload, not the extraordinary workload like we're under now. And so, yeah, just something for the five of you to think about as we move forward. And obviously, the situation is fluid, very dynamic, and we will have ongoing communication throughout it. So Colt, that's really all I have this morning. And unless any of you have questions, I'm happy to turn it over to Nick.
That's Commissioner Dunn, Derek. From what I hear, the general public, probably six months before the general public gets an opportunity to be vaccinated. So I agree with it. We're going to have it all 2021, too.
Yeah, and I think, Roy, I think that is, I don't think any of us know, but I think that's a very fair estimate, yeah, of us being six months into '21. I think that's just a great estimate, yep.
All right, well, thank you for the update, Derek. Nick?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Quick report here. As you know, we have our Tuesday meetings with the nursing facilities. I did hear good news this time. All of them have had residents test negative two times. So that means we've hopefully started to get it out of the nursing facility residents. Concerning news is we still have two nursing facilities that continue to have a couple of employees test positive. But they're doing a good job keeping it away from the residents. And as we're seeing, there's employees all over that are testing positive. So it is encouraging that the residents aren't getting it. So it means they're doing a good job. Continue to have conversations regarding the quarantine orders and what that looks like. And just because, I'm going to put it out there again, CDC, KDHC, and Dr. Ransom all agreed on a new quarantine, which is pushing the need for testing. So if somebody is a close contact and asymptomatic, they can test five days after that contact. And if they test negative, they're released from their quarantine on day seven. If they are symptomatic, then they still have to be 72 hours symptom-free before they can be released if they do test negative. So symptoms and non-symptoms are the determination on this. If somebody chooses not to get tested and are asymptomatic from being a close contact, it's 10 days versus the 14. We have had meetings with the superintendents, meetings with the school nurses, and I believe we're getting ready to have another meeting with the school nurses to explain this. Again, to help them understand and be able to put this information out to their parents and their kids. So we continue to see the changes, work through the changes with them and make that happen. One thing I continue to see on social media that I like to address a few of these on here is if somebody is in school, they're both wearing masks, they are not considered a close contact. We have, we've seen over and over again when we quarantine kids at home, but they don't stay at home. They're on Facebook all over the place. At least in school, they're wearing masks, they're doing what they should be doing. Social distancing, it is safer than being at the local gas station. So these are things we're working through. The other thing I saw is people thinking our numbers are using outside people. For example, Baldwin City, our address is from Baldwin City in Franklin County. We report numbers that are Franklin County numbers. So if it says Wellsville on it, they are a Wellsville resident. We have seen with the increase in testing and some of these rapid testing places, get, put Wellsville as an address and then make it Franklin County, let's say it's a Miami County. We work very hard to make sure we catch those and get them routed to the right county and change. So I don't know if you follow or not, but I believe we had 10 that we caught earlier this week that were actually addresses on the bordering, but they were in other counties that we shipped out. So we do a solid job trying to keep those numbers as accurate as possible. We did switch trailers. We gave Alan back his Homeland Security trailer on Saturday. Tom, myself switched the trailers around. And now are using the Public Health trailer that we purchased to do rapid test or to do testing here at the Annex facilities. One thing that we have seen is the state's putting a solid effort on getting testing done, but we're seeing a lack in communication on some of it. With that being said, the state has offered health departments, hospitals, an opportunity to work with a local lab with a guaranteed 48-hour time turnaround. And that will be a drive-through testing. We've applied for that, so we could just offer drive-through testing to individuals that want to be tested. We have quite a few that pull in out here at the trailer, want to get tested, but don't meet the criteria through the state. So for the month of December, if we get accepted in this, we will be able to take anybody that drives through. The nice thing about that is they do have a portal that we put their name in and those people can get on that portal and get their information. So that should alleviate a little bit of our time calling negatives for that period. But that's one of the things we're working on, hoping we can get it up and running as soon as possible. With that, there is discussions of doing some weekend drive-through testing. So maybe being open on a Saturday morning for a few hours to allow those individuals that aren't working or that are working during the week, the opportunity to come in on a Saturday and get a rapid test. The state initiative is to test 15% of the population, so. Uh, the state initiative is to test 15% of the population, so I hope we see that. The other opportunity that's happening, um, is they've contracted with a company that have sent us emails wanting us to give them locations where they can set up for drive-through testing. Uh, we haven't seen them yet. The emergency managers are working through that with them, but they will be set up at Deo Show and at Pomona, um, when they arrive. So we're still trying to work through the details on that, how they're going to inform us who they've tested and where, how we're going to find out about positives. Because as we continue to see, a lot of the reporting is getting, putting us three or four days behind by the time we get a rapid case or a positive case from a rapid. And with the new guidelines, you only go back two days. So if, if we're four days into something, i- it really makes it tough for us to do contact tracing. So a lot of moving parts going on with that. Uh, the state is starting to ship supplies for the vaccine. Um, we, uh, we're getting a, eight pallets of hand sanitizer delivered this week. Uh, other things we'll be looking at is, is supplies for giving the vaccine, cotton balls, that kind of stuff. So we're, we're starting to see the state ramping up on that. The other thing the state's doing is really, I think, spending some CARES Act money and, and is randomly sending supplies to the counties. So we're having to navigate through that as well. With that, that's pretty much my report on the, uh, the Health Department. I will tell you though, dispatch, uh, as you know, we're a part of the Kansas 911 Council. Uh, and with that, our phone systems and everything are through it. There was some outages in the south part of the county. There's two hosts, there's a host in Wichita and one in Topeka. We're the backup dispatch center for Lyon County with a backup dispatch center for, uh, Park City. And with that, when they had outages, our dispatchers started getting 911 calls from those two places, which, uh, was, uh, good, they handled them well. We, we did start preparing to bring somebody else in to help, but the, it worked. Um, we're working through that now of what that's going to be like, if, if it would happen again. But that system, uh, is in place and, and we're working through, throughout that. We've had, uh, one more dispatch center, it's the Police Department for, uh, Andover, reach out, and we're working on what that could look like if we would take them on as well. But there's a lot of push to get dispatch centers on both sides. So if one does go down, you still have your, your 911s taken care of. We've also been selected, us and Barton County, to do a, a statewide dispatch trial. They're sending us, uh, system from Nexus, which is the mapping system we use. They also have a CAD system, they're sending us mobile and iPads to, uh, try working on what it would look like for us to dispatch a Barton County unit and them to dispatch one of ours if this would happen. So us in Barton County will be in that trial with AT&amp;T. That's the report I have right now. Yes, I will tell you, we did in November at a 23% positivity rate. We did 2,164 tests, had 508 positives of us, as of now. We still can sit, to continue to see them trickle in, although we're not able to trace them. Uh, so far, what's reported is 140. We've done just over 800 tests in December for 16%. But I do know, like I said last week, we have probably 15 or 20 more positives that still the state hasn't showed. So that's, uh, my report for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is Commissioner Dunn.
Go ahead, Roy.
Okay, uh, is there any cost involved in these, uh, tests?
No, actually, uh, there is, uh, we could generate some revenue from doing those drive-through tests because the state's willing to give us a, a certain amount of money for each one of them we do. But if it's free to everybody else.
Okay, second question I have is, uh, is there any scams out there where people, uh, can buy a test over, over the internet and do, do them themselves? Is there anything going on?
There, there is, there is home tests. The thing about the home test kits are, uh, they're just like anything else. They're, they're, I, I, I can't tell you what their accuracy rate is, but if you don't do them right, um, you're going to see false positives and false negatives because they, they don't put out a lot of good information about when to use them and how to use them.
Okay. Cole, before you transition to Ian's question, I, I want to touch on something Roy asked. Um, uh, the state is actually offering to pay local governments to administer these tests. As Nick said, they're trying to test 15% of the population. And, and what we are starting to see, um, is it's almost 2021, and, and we've talked at length about how we've kind of had trouble spending our CARES Act allocations and how we were on a short turnaround. Well, the state of Kansas was too. And I think in some circles, they get a bad rap for this, but I, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's their fault anymore than it's our fault that we've struggled. They, they have struggled to use all of this money. And so one of the ways that they're trying to do that is by using this testing program. And it, it really becomes a revenue source for local governments because if we participate and we administer these tests, then they pay us to do that. And so, um, as Nick said, we're in the process of working out the contract to do that. And I think some of the pallets of hand sanitizer and the vaccination supplies, I, again, I think so much of that is the state trying to use that CARES Act money. And it does create some administrative headaches, but at the end of the day, it's good for us. I mean, it's, it's saving us money and/or is a revenue source. So, um, that's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you, Ian, you have something?
I had, this is Commissioner Dickinson. I had seen this morning, uh, Nick, that the, I think it was the Kansas Board of Education is recommending that elementary schools stay open no matter what the rate is, um, in the county. They're feeling that the, so I wondered if, if you had heard that and what you thought about it.
I saw it again this morning, just like you guys did. That's one of the things, we really don't get a lot of the information from the states. And so they're at the news stations and we read them on the internet, just like everyone else. I think, uh, one of the pushes we've had throughout this is trying to keep the kids in school just because academically is what we need to do. Uh, but that falls back on the superintendents and the teachers on how they're going to enforce the mask, promote social distancing.
Oh, okay, I thought it was something to do with, uh...
I would, I did also see that, uh, KESHA did, uh,
Okay.
changed their ruling from no spectators to allowing two spectators per kid. And then, uh, to attend the games and also put it back on the school boards to adjust that how they feel fair. So when we went from no spectators, now they're, they're loosening that to at least two with this, with the schools having, um, the ability to adjust that again. So those are things coming down the pipes.
All right, well, thank you for the update, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, I told we have Sari on the line today. Sari, are you there? All right. Derek, did we have, uh?
Yeah, I see Sari on the call. I don't know if she is muted somehow, but she's on for sure.
She is muted.
All right, we'll circle back her out. Uh, David Lee?
Commissioners, so, uh, in the last week, we've, uh, we've hauled rock to seven of, uh, our blade districts. Uh, and we've also, uh, Road and Bridge crews have also hauled cover material to our CND landfill, which we have to do periodically to cover up the, um, uh, the material that is brought to the landfill. Uh, we've also spent a few days reshaping Stafford Terrace between Kentucky and Louisiana. Uh, this road was made impassable by kids and adults, I guess, out, uh, mudding after, uh, the, the last few rains. Uh, this is a minimum maintenance road that we're working with, uh, the area landowners to vacate, actually. So, um, um, I've got that road vacation. I'm also working with some landowners on Tennessee Road between John Brown and Hamilton. That's another minimum maintenance that, uh, those folks would like to close for the very same reason. So hopefully, um, uh, here later this week, I'll be able to get those cover sheets and the material put together so that you'll be seeing that on a upcoming agenda. Uh, today, we've closed Idaho Road between Clark and Douglas. Uh, we're assisting, uh, some landowners through there in removing some trees that are kind of along the rideaway. Um, they're quite large trees, so they're going to, um, um, end up in our road. So we have closed the road to prevent traffic from coming through there while we get that cleaned up. Hopefully that's, uh, done by the end of the day. Uh, we are also pretty close to having all of our FEMA documentation submitted to the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. Uh, we're hoping to have everything submitted by, uh, early to mid-January. Uh, and quite frankly, this is, uh, taking up the bulk of my time right now, um, doing quality control and, and making sure that we've got all the, all of the, uh, information correct. So, uh, we'll be working heavily on that until we're submitted. A few upcoming agenda items that you'll see, besides the two, uh, road vacations, uh, we'll also be having a presentation by SES, uh, consultants on the landfill expansion evaluation. Uh, we'll also be hearing from, um, Keith Browning with LTAP, uh, regarding the pavement management system that we've, uh, recently installed. And then we've got some, um, uh, some KDOT things, uh, Title VI, which is a discrimination, uh, resolution that we'll need to work through. And then also I plan to, um, bring before you, um, application to apply for, uh, KDOT Local Roads Safety Plan, which is a, um, oh, it's, um, uh, a project that, uh, consultant will come in and evaluate all of our roads for, um, uh, safety issues. And there's a fee for that, but our portion of it is relatively small. So I'll be bringing that information to you in the coming weeks. And that's all I have for today.
David, you been out to Proximity Park lately?
Uh, not lately, no sir.
The city's been hauling their spoils pile out there, so mainly filled dirt that comes up from, I don't know, digging up sewers or whatever. Uh, do you have any idea, what I understand is a pretty good pile, uh, and it's more or less trash piled up there on the corner? They going to clean that up, they have a plan for it?
You know, I haven't, uh, I have not visited with the city specifically about that, uh, recently. Um, throughout the construction projects, um, we have, that, that same area's been utilized to store, um, um, material dirt and rock and, and whatnot. And, um, uh, I know the city and the county both have brought material in and taken material out. But I will certainly, uh, visit with the city to see what their long-term plans are for that area.
Okay, and then, um, my thought is, we probably, I guess, uh, that's right on the corner, first thing you see, maybe we shouldn't, I mean, I understand using it as a lay-down yard or whatever for construction, but, uh, maybe we shouldn't get in the habit of doing that. And, um, if this is, I mean, I know there's, uh, that, uh, the spoils are something they're constantly dealing with and need a place for, that may very well be material we could use out of the landfill for, uh, uh, cover material.
Right.
That being close enough to town, they may not have to haul it twice. I don't know if that's something you want to look into, working with them.
Yes, sir, I definitely will. We're, we're always struggling to find good cover material.
I think that could be a savings for both, both us and them, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Fix that problem, all righty, any questions for David?
This is Commissioner Dickinson, before David leaves, I just wondered how we were doing on our road, uh, the overlays that we were working on. Are we going to, are we done? Are we still have stuff to do?
We still have, uh, a number of areas to, uh, to tackle yet. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, the weather holds out and we're able to do that this year. The areas that we still have left to do, um, are the, um, Greenwood Estates subdivision. There's quite a bit of patching in there, there's some on LaBette Road, uh, Sand Creek Road. Uh, there's a number of locations. Um, we've got a couple of spots on Colorado coming into Pomona. Uh, and then we've got, uh, a few more on, uh, I believe it's Colorado, north of Pomona, uh, up north that we need to tackle as well. And, and we are in contact with, uh, the contractor, and they are still, um, optimistic that we'll be able to, uh, catch most of that this year. Um, um, the, the, oh, the part that I'm a little concerned about being able to finish this year is the, uh, overlay on, uh, LaBette Road and Montana Road by, um, uh, where they're rebuilding the new bridge. Uh, that may drag into next year, but I'm, I'm still pretty optimistic that the, most of the patching will, uh, will get done this year. Uh, if it not, if it is not, we will definitely, um, uh, communicate that and, and, uh, we will, um, county crews will, uh, take care of the, uh, put temporary patch in the worst, uh, locations that are, that remain. And then as soon as we can in the spring, uh, we will get those, uh, properly fixed. So we are, um, again, working with Kilo Construction. Um, I just visited with them, uh, yesterday, I believe, um, to, to get an update and, and talk through the remaining projects.
Thank you.
All right, Sari, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Sure can, go ahead.
Okay, that was user error, just by the way, I guess star and pound have different functions. That was just my public service announcement for today. Um, anyway, good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to provide a quick update on the employee service awards presentation. Uh, we'll be recognizing employees at the December 30th Commissioner Meeting, and we have 36 county employees that hit milestone anniversaries during 2020. And I know several of you have volunteered to help distribute the service awards next week, and I appreciate everyone that's able to help. I'm still working out the details on employee schedules, but I will send you more information sometime this week with details on when we can visit the various departments and distribute the awards. And someone from HR or possibly Casey will also accompany you to take pictures. But again, I'll send you more information with details later this week. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Sounds like we got it, thank you, Sari. Janet?
Commissioners, you received an email from me, um, that had our budget amendment in it. I have published in that, in the paper, and we are set to have that on our agenda for the 23rd. Um, if you guys have any questions about that, feel free to just shoot me an email or give me a call, whatever you have, and I'll be happy to answer your questions about it.
What about the reorganizational meeting, do you know when that's going to be?
We have not, we have not discussed that yet, um, but we will be working on that. It should be the 11th of January.
Okay. All right, let's go on to Commissioners' comments and board reports, Rick?
I don't have anything.
All right, Roy?
Uh, well, I, I have, uh, PECAN, the Board of Trustees, uh, annually has to, uh, do some training on the governance for Head Start Program. And, uh, it's a series of, uh, videos or a series of PowerPoint presentations you work through and, uh, do this training, usually we did it in person, but this year we're doing it virtually and has to be done by the end of the year. So I've been, uh, working through all the PowerPoint, uh, stuff, and that's all I have going on.
All right, Dawn?
Yeah, uh, at the Kennedy Harley, we'll have a solid wait authority virtual meeting tomorrow. Uh, we have several items on there. We have several items on there to discuss. One of them is, I've been working with our new coordinator, Shay, and I met with David Lee for a little bit yesterday, and we're trying to, through the solid weight authority, to get a approximately a $5,000 grant to buy a storage shipping container to be used at the Franklin County Recycling Center. So we're going to discuss that tomorrow. We had a deal for ideas here a while back, and that's one of my produce for for us here. And I met with David yesterday, and he's getting some, we're working out a price range and what it costs and to deliver and to set up. And so we're working on that right now. And I can tell you more after we have our meeting and discuss it with the other counties tomorrow with a couple of other grants we're looking to obtain. That's it.
Thank you, Don, Ian.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, I attended a Zoom meeting of the Franklin County Food Policy Council on Monday. They are, their Connect Food Pantry had one more delivery before the holidays. And then I believe that they were going to start again on the 5th of January. It kind of depends on when the school is in session because they use the, some of the students as their helpers. And then a lot of the discussion was on the new Harvest to Home, the new program that they're trying to develop to provide produce and fruits to desert, food deserts, and they're going to start with Wellsville and then hopefully expand it out throughout the county. So they are still working on that program. In on Monday night, I attended the Princeton City Council meeting. One of their, well, first of all, the the mayor is in quarantine, and so he had to join by phone. But they have been having a lot of issues, and I'm, and I'm sure that maybe we have and others have too, that to get this CARES Act money spent, they had people that said that they were, they would be able to do it by the end of the year, and now they're saying that, no, they're not going to be able to do it by the end of the year. Or things that they have ordered are on back order and won't be available before the end of the year. So I know that they've been in contact with Janet as what should we do about this or that, because they've been having a lot of issues with that. And then they had a very exciting new business opportunity that hopefully will be coming to Princeton. It is not my, my news to share, but it will be exciting if it happens, and you might look forward to maybe possibly a new business appearing in the city of Princeton. And then yesterday morning, I attended the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce monthly board meeting, and most of it was spent in trying to set a budget for next year. The chamber is one of those institute institutions that did not benefit from government money. And so all their last revenue last year is really putting them in a bind as far as moving forward. The, both the director and the secretary are taking some salary hits for the next year to try to make the budget workable. And it is going to be a work in progress throughout the year. It's something that they're going to have to continually address to make sure that they are on track as far as their budget is concerned. So that is all I have, and Merry Christmas to all.
All right, I don't have anything to add either. So there's nothing else, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir, Don, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Roy, is there a second?
Don.
All right, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.